It's got to be restructured. I mean, it... It's got to be restructured all the way. I mean, from... From... That from you, Albert, I guess, to get you a assistant. I mean, to get you a secretary. Yeah.
They just need a motion to write down which way to go on this issue, or we can move on.
I'd make a motion... I'd make a motion, funnily enough, getting there, writing that thing up and see from top to bottom, you know? And structure it up where it'll be, you know, everybody. It won't be one person involved, one person involved. Just have it structured up like it should be. Might have to get with Michael and see how to do it. I know you know how to do it, but you...
Right.
But if you run into a problem, get with the county attorney.
That's your motion?
Yeah.
Do we have a... We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Massie. Any further discussion?
Commissioner, let me... Let me add something. This here... What I'm asking for, it just... It's just going to make the department better all the way around.
I believe it.
I think I... I mean, I wish I could just get y'all's support on this here.
Pleasure of the board. We do have a motion of second on the floor. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion cares.
I believe it'll make it better, but it still... It still got to be lined up right.
Right.
Well, I'm not against it. I just want it done right.
Have you got any other issues, Mr. Davis?
That's it.
Any commissioners have anything for Mr. Davis?
I have something, Mr. Chairman, before he leaves. Not really concerning him, but he's here and it's concerning the department. I just want to state for the record that the county assumed $8,000 plus of right-of-way debris pickup when we halted over the schedules for your charge in the last two weeks.
And that was related to storm debris?
Just related to right-of-way debris period.
Yeah. Then, yeah, it was some storm debris.
Any other comment from the commissioner? Thank you, partner.
All right. Thank you all.
It'll work out, partner.
Next will be Ms. Pam Brunel, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Commissioner. I do not have any action items at this time.
Michael, would you... Again, would you do, uh...
Sure.
The one about the roundtable while Ms. Pam is here?
Uh, well...
I don't remember what item it was.
What about number one? What about reentry tags? Okay. Um, good. Item number one, Commissioner. Inform the board that Chairman Parrish held the roundtable post-hurricane Irma meeting at the Emergency Operations Center on Thursday, October 12th at 9:00 a.m. Attendees included Sheriff A.J. Smith, Mr. Mike Cooper, Mrs. Craig Gibson, both from Weems, Mr. Fonda Davis, Ms. Howard Neighbors from the county departments, Ms. Pam Brunel, her staff, Tress Dameron, and Ms. Jennifer Daniels, myself, and the chairman. It was a very productive discussion that allowed all involved to understand the restrictions, expectations, guidelines, and other responsibilities we face during a storm or other type of emergency. What became obvious during the discussion is the need to update some of the agencies and counties, departments, hurricane plans, and policies. Didn't know the correct names. I had to use that. Especially the staffing policy. I recommend allowing the county's labor attorney, Attorney Stephen Meck, to update the current emergency staffing policy so that it meets personnel requirements such as ADA and FMLA. Board action to engage Attorney Stephen Meck of Carson Atkins, the county's labor attorney firm, to update the county's staffing plan during a storm or emergency event. It was really a... It's attributed excellent job. Very good roundtable. I think a lot was brought out, and we were able to see. We were all able to see what Pam needs, you know, to do her job, but what some of the other departments and agencies, what they need in addition to do to get it done. So I think we're going to be able to, I guess, get to happy medium, you know, with our plans, and then everybody will be on the same page the next time we have a storm.
Yeah, it turned out really well. I think everybody involved understood where we were coming from. You know, the hospital's got certain regulations they have to follow. Of course, we know what Pam has to do with FEMA regulations and guidelines and protocol procedures that she has to follow. The sheriff was there also, and, you know, the sheriff's department and our hospital and EOC are very essential... Very essential departments during a disaster response. And everybody understanding what everybody else is up against as far as regulations and guidelines that they have to follow. And I think everybody got a better understanding that was at the roundtable, exactly what was expected and exactly, uh... It helped them to understand the issues that each department was facing when it came to disaster response. And the last three places that we'll shut down in the county is our hospital and our sheriff's department and our EOC in times of disaster. They are... They're here for the community and for the public, and they will be the last ones to leave when it comes down to it. And when it gets so bad, then they are mandated to leave. So I think it was pretty good. Pam, do you have any comments you'd like to add to that?
Um, no, sir. Again, I think you pretty much summed it up. There were a lot of regulations that the hospital has that we didn't know about that helped us... It's going to help us when we review their plan to have a better understanding of it.
And I think it helped those other departments understand some of the protocol and procedures and guidelines that you had to follow. You know, anything that goes on during disaster response has to go through the EOC, whether you need additional resources or anything else, has to go through the EOC in order to be reimbursable by FEMA. So I think it was...
If it doesn't come through my office, it doesn't happen as far as FEMA's concerned.
And I think that was one thing that we were lacking, everybody having the knowledge that everything flows through the EOC so that we're able to file the paperwork and look at the dollars and get disaster declarations in order to get the FEMA reimbursement. So that was a big issue, and I think it worked out good. There was nothing adversarial about it. It was just frank talk that went on to let, you know, each department were afforded the time to put out what they had to go by and just give everybody a better understanding. And I think it'll help us in our next disaster response. I think it was very productive, and so I wanted to bring that out while Pam was here this morning. And Mr. Cooper back there from the hospital, he was in there, and just a good, a broad level of discussion, and I think it was very good. Pam, you said you had no...
I don't have any action items.
Any action items. So we have anything from the commissioners from Ms. Pam?
We didn't need anything on me.
No, sir. I just updated the board. I will say, Pam, we'll say, I probably don't want to go into it. She spent... We found out a lot of her volunteer and staff time was spent issuing reentry tags right up until the storm. That... That needs to change, Commissioner. I mean, we've got to figure a way to cut that off at some point, you know? Because you have... I mean, number one in her item right now, they're still doing the reentry tag.
We're still mailing them out.
Do it now. Do it when there's no storm.
We get a...
So that she can read a rec of volunteer, people that she has hours and stuff like that, to other issues that are going on that's needed.
And that was something else I was going to bring to the board, and we did discuss at the roundtable about, you know, when do you stop issuing the reentry tags? Because it clogged the whole EOC up out there. You had people coming in. If we have to leave, we can't get back. And the program's been going on for six years, but everybody waited to that particular time to come flooding in, and you've got 14 or 15 different volunteers, not counting Pam and her staff and the sheriff's office and myself, and you had, uh... You had a person from FDLE out there. You had a person from the state, the CERT program. I mean, the building was clogged up, but you still had people. So we need to establish some kind of policy that when you reach a certain point during the disaster response, then we will no longer issue the reentry tags. So everybody needs to, you know... We as a board need to figure that out and let the public know, you know, you got from now to next year, or, you know, hopefully we don't have another hurricane from now through November, but you've got plenty of time to get these reentry tags, and you just can't flood out the EOC in a time of disaster response with all these people coming in. And we don't have another place, you know? I suggest that we may need to find another place that they go to to get these reentry tags rather than the EOC. Or do we cut it off, you know, two days before the storm hits? Or, you know, how does the county want it?
They wait 150 miles offshore, and they want to all run and get tickets.
Right, and it just clogged up the... Clogged up the EOC.
Yeah, Pam called me too. It was just packed. He would talk on the phone.
Issued what? Issued what, 3,500?
No, we recounted 5,000. That's half of our population. The other half of our population is in prison.
5,000 people coming through that office to get a reentry tag.
That was in two days, wasn't it?
Yeah. 5,000 people.
And what it was, was, you know, we were in the eye of the storm. I mean, they had Irma coming right over by county. So that's what... But the people need to understand this needs to be done.
They need to keep up with their tags.
And a lot of people had tags, but they lost them or they couldn't find them. So they had to come back and get another. And the public just needs to understand, you know, that you just can't do all this stuff at one time when the storm is bearing down on you. So we need to do a better job as a public, and I know Pam is educated because every meeting she comes up here, she talks about issuing reentry tags. I mean, it's every meeting for the last six years that we've issued some more reentry tags. And then all of a sudden, 5,000 people clogged that little building up out there, and there was no place for anybody that needed to respond to the disaster. There was no place for them to even park. You had to park way down the road and run down the road to get to the EOC. So something we need to think about, and I don't know if we need to develop a policy or just try to better educate, you know? That's...
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
On... Ms. Pam, like, on... Now, you issued that 5,000. Half of them going to lose. I mean, would they got to be reissued?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Have to be reissued. That's what he's saying. I mean, I have them come in and, you know, "Well, I don't know where they're at." "Oh, well, uh, we've moved, and they're in a box somewhere, and I don't want to have to look for them." They're your personal responsibility. That's your way to get back into your property. People need to understand. They need to keep up with those. Those are just as important as their driving license or any other paper that they have. Put them in your box that you're going to take with you when you have to evacuate from here.
And we had some people come in and say, "I had one that was in a glove box in my truck, but I traded my car in, so now I don't have it no more."
Well, there's somebody hasn't...
And it's just all kinds of... All kinds of stories that we heard because I was out there with her.
Well, I'm going to tell you the truth. I'm guilty because I lost it.
Mine's on my refrigerator.
But we just need to do a better job and figure out some other way of issuing these tags without clogging that building up.
I mean, Jeannie mails them out handfuls every week. I mean, a lot of people from out of town especially, and in town, send us their information, and every week she's sending out a stack like this. So it's not just the 5,000 we issued during Irma. It's an ongoing process every day.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Chairman. Does the other counties have that same problem? Pam, do you know?
I don't know whether they do or not. Some of our surrounding counties do not have a reentry.
Yeah.
Now, I took this reentry from down south because of when I first came into this job, two things I heard. "I'm not leaving because I can't get back into this county." And second of all, "While I'm gone, somebody will steal all my stuff." Well, that reentry tag expedites your reentry. When that trooper or law enforcement sees that tag, he's just going to flag you through. All right, that tag is supposed to be hanging in your mirror the whole time you're moving around in this county, and they are zoned out. Now, that doesn't mean that you can't go from Appalachia over to East Point because that's a different color, if you're at a place of business. But if you're out riding in the neighborhoods, law enforcement is supposed to stop you and ask you what you're doing and redirect you back to your zone because you have no business in another zone riding the neighborhoods. That's why we set this up this way.
It keeps people from casing your property while you're out of town.
Yeah. I mean, immediately, they should hang their tags once evacuation notice has been issued. Those tags need to go in those people's mirrors.
Kind of like a handicap parking?
Yes, sir. And that gives law enforcement... I mean, they look at it. All of them's been issued, uh, the system where they know what zones are what color so they can see. And again, you know, we don't have to use that system as often as we do the island. The island's a horse of a different color. Every time you wind blows and you have to evacuate that island, then you have to implement that tagging system over there. Now, contractors in this county, businesses on that island that have people that come and help them close up their houses, they're not issued that island tag. They're issued a white tag so law enforcement knows that they're a contractor, and it is the business's responsibility to keep up with those white tags. They're actually issued to the business, not the individual. So we can get them over there, get their houses closed down, and get them back off.
But... Mm-hmm. But they take... They not just only for storms, they for any kind of disaster, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Basically, any kind of disaster that we had, those would be implemented.
Could be a wildfire. I hope it don't bother anything.
You say it could be a wildfire or anything?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I mean, it's the same thing. You don't want... You don't want somebody casing somebody else's property. Let's face it, we've all seen it. We all know this. Disaster brings out the best in some people, but it brings out the worst in others.
Yeah.
And those were the two things. So that's why I think years ago, y'all had some kind of sticker that y'all used as a reentry system, if I understand correctly. Because I've had people come and ask me about a sticker. I'm like, "No, I know nothing about a sticker." Well, we used to have a sticker that led us back in.
The only sticker system that I know of is it was kind of Alligator Point to let those folks back in.
Well, they have a... They have a different color tag now to let them back in on their property.
But it wasn't... It was for like Alligator Point, the island, but as far as the mainland, I don't think that's...
Okay, we can move on. Any other comments from Ms. Pam from the board? Thank you, Pam. We'll keep working at it.
All right. Thank you.
Next will be Mr. Eric Lovestran.
Lovestran, ask the commissioners on the Shellfish Conference.
Yeah, he's at the ISSC meeting.
Yes.
That's correct. And next will be Ms. Lisa Lance.
And she's at a new library director training in Tallahassee.
Okay.
That's good.
So that moves us, Mr. Chairman, to the bid. That should be qualification opening. So the first one we're going to do is a... Our queue for the project management, engineering, and environmental services FEMA. So, uh... And this... This commissioners is the... I'm sorry, Pam walked away. This is the requirement from FEMA now that we have to put our engineer out on bid for the FEMA project that Aaron Allen's been working on for quite some time. So the first one of the two, if I'm not mistaken, is submitted by Duberry Preble Rich out of Port St. Joe, Florida.
Duberry.
You're getting as good as mine. What you say? Thanks a lot. The second is, I'm going to spell it. I think it's pronounced Gortemoller Engineering. They're out of Panama City Beach, Florida.
G-O-R what?
I'm sorry.
They're at Panama?
I'm sorry, sir?
Where was the address?
Oh, they're out of Panama City Beach. And what I would ask is that the board make a motion to send it to the review committee that will be made up of Mr. Kurengin, Mr. Pierce, and myself.
Make a motion that we send it to the reviewing committee?
We have a...
Pick one.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley. Do we have a second?
Come back at the next meeting with a recommendation.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? The motion carries.
Do the lawyer need to approve this?
No, I don't think so. All right, the next is actually, uh... This is a bit RFP. This is for that Mill Road project. You authorized advertisement of September 5th. The project is for approximately 1.67 miles of widening and resurfacing and 3.10, 3.10 miles of new construction, striping signs, minor drainage improvements, and grassing along Mill Road, beginning at the intersection of State Road 30 and continuing towards Burnt Bridge Road.
How long the project is this? How long is the project?
Um, there's... Well, it's 1.6 miles just widening and resurfacing. There is an additional 3.10 miles of the new construction, the striping, the signs, grassing, a lot more work. Okay, so Capital Asphalt is the first bidder. Let's see here. They always look for the... Ask for the bid bond. There's a bid bond included.
Where the...
Capital Asphalt, sir. They are out of Tallahassee, Florida. And they just did a breakdown, sort of spreadsheet breakdown, not using the exact bidding papers. Just want to verify that. And it looks like their total bid for this project probably is bigger than I thought. It is, uh... That's the total base bid. That was for Capital Asphalt. Sir? Next is Robertson Roberts. Here, I'm kind of looking at this backwards. I apologize.
Taylorhead?
They are out of... Yeah, they're Tallahassee address. Yes, sir. Checking for the bid bond. Where's the bond? You sure it is? Yes, sir. That's there. And their total base bid is $2,189,047.13. Two, one, eight, nine, zero, four, seven, point, one, three. Anderson Columbia Company Incorporated. Don't see a return address here, so can't tell you quite where they're from. They have their bid bond checked by Tony Schuler, and their total base bid is $2,354,856.72. Two, three, five, four, eight, five, six, point, seven, two.
Seven, two?
Seven, two. This CW Roberts, they're out of Tallahassee. Tony Schuler verified their bid bond is there, and their total base bid is $2,588,967.85. Two, five, eight, zero, nine, six, seven, point, eight, five. Six?
Six.
So now we need a motion to send this to our engineers for them to review the project and then return at the next meeting with a recommendation to the board.
Make a motion for him to send it to review it.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massie. Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? The motion carries.
And your last bid, commissioners, is for the courthouse HVAC replacement. These are the small units above the judicial suite on the east side of the courthouse. The county has already replaced the bigger units, one on the north side and the other on the south side of the courthouse. Now, before we proceed, there was one bidder that came in... It was due at 4:30?
Seventeen minutes.
So it came in 17 minutes late. So I would need to be able to read this one. I need the board to make a motion to waive the... I'm sorry, what the term I'm looking for?
Technically not the planned...
So, yeah.
Although it was not submitted tightly. This has happened on occasion. The gentleman that turned in this particular bid, I think it's P&amp;P Consulting.
Yes, sir.
Explained to the deputy clerk that he got caught up in traffic who was 17 minutes late. What the board has ordinarily done is you will have a motion to waive the technical deficiency for being submitted late simply because we don't let... That ended up being the low bid.
So it wasn't five days... Wasn't five days later, it was 17 minutes. So pleasure of the board on that issue.
And he agreed with the clerk. I mean, there was no... He didn't object. He said he was late. He apologized as best he could.
Pleasure of the board on that issue, whether you want to waive that technical default.
Make a motion to waive.
We have a motion to waive on... By Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Massie. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? The motion carries.
Okay, so this one we'll read first. It's P&amp;P Heating and Cooling.
P&amp;P.
P&amp;P. They are out of Bonifay, Florida. They have a check instead of a bid bond, attorney. A check. Right, okay. So their bid... Their... I'm sorry. No check for bond for this one. This is from Mr. Gray and Associates. They're out of Carroll, Florida, and their total base bid is $32,444. Three, two, four, four, four. GW, they also have a, like, just a social...
GW?
I'm sorry. GW Services. They're out of Port St. Their base bid is... Board is ready. Next is Air Mechanical and Service Corporation. What I didn't see is... We were both looking for... Oh, they're out of Tallahassee, Florida. Their total bid is $34,711. Three, four, seven, one, one. And they do have a bid bond.
Is that all of them?
And that's all of them.
Well, there's a... I mean, this is this top one right here. He's way... I mean, he's $15,000, and the other one was 15. Everyone of them just about 15 more than him.
So this also needs to go to review committee to...
Who was that assist of mine?
I think it's one through commissioners. This is probably Mark, myself, and it might be the architect, Mr.... Doug Shula.
Doug Shula?
Yes.
Okay, listen.
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
You know, sometimes you're looking at a low bid like this, but these other bids is about in the range. Did that man bid it right?
That has to be reviewed by the committee. Just make sure that they are a responsive bidder when y'all review the review and to make sure they're not replacing one unit, they're replacing both those units. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Make sure that they responded to all your bid requirements.
Yes.
I think so, Commissioner Lockley. And I had the same questions, make sure that they, I mean, we, we like to save money, but we wanna make sure y'all have done it right, too.
Yes. Okay, he's talking about fifteen thousand dollars under everybody.
I'll make a motion that we turn this over to the committee to come back at the next meeting with a recommendation.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed, the motion carries. I'd like to deviate from the agenda real quick. The clerk says she has some, some other business to take care of, so I'd like to go ahead and take Ms. Marcus Johnson, clerk of the court.